I call this meeting to order at 7:07 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Obaso Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Mayor Burnworth.
Here.
And Mayor Protim Amparano is absent for the record. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Crankshaw, would you do us the honors of leading this?
Of course. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Morita, do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Madam Mayor, there are no adjustments to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, and for the record, can we, I want to say that we will put Item D1 that's on the special meeting agenda, we will run that directly after Item E5. Moving on to public appearances, Item B1 matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Do we have any public comments here for tonight? Ma'am, please step forward.
Mayor, City Council, and everyone present, I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Viridiana Rosales, and I am the current interim center manager for the Small Business Development Center here in the Imperial Valley. I don't know if you were aware, but since the end of last year, we have been hosted now by the Imperial County, currently under the branch of the Imperial County Workforce and Economic Development Office. We are also part of the San Diego and Imperial County SBDC network. We have a total of nine networks, including our center, and our mission here in the Imperial Valley is to empower small business owners to create growth and expansion of those businesses that are already in existence. Just to highlight some of our numbers, last year in 2022, we were able to provide counseling to 4,990 clients. Counseling hours that totaled over 19,000, provided training events in the 600s, and attendings to those events surpassed 8,000 attendings. For 2023, we have the same mission. We want to continue to empower business owners and to help those business owners in our region have the resources that they need to create that business growth that our region needs. We currently have a few business owners in the city of Imperial, and we would like to further partner and strengthen our partnership with the city of Imperial, again, to bring that unique resources that our business community needs. With your permission, I would love to visit your city hall and provide information to our center so it can be available to the business owners that come into your city hall looking for assistance.
Thank you. Mr. Morita, if you could, could you please give her one of your business cards? And then our city manager will get with you to schedule a meeting for you to come to city hall.
Perfect, thank you so much, and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
If I could just briefly, I work with Viridiana in the City of El Centro, and I encourage anybody that's even thinking about opening a business to immediately get in contact with the IVSBDC. They offer free classes in bookkeeping, in preparing personal financial statements, any type of topic you can think of, and they're, like I said, their services for the most part are free. They have a very knowledgeable staff, and they're there to help any entrepreneur thinking of opening a business. You need to go visit these people.
Do we have any other public comments for tonight? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, did we receive any public comments via email? Thank you. Moving on to Item C, Consent Agenda. All items appearing under Consent Agenda will be acted upon by the city council in one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request an item, be considered separately. The item will be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do we have a motion for the Consent Agenda? Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Obaso Martinez and a second by Councilmember Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Moving on to Items D, Public Hearing. Item D1, subject: Abandonment of portion of public right-of-way on O Street and between 12th and 13th Street. Mr. Morita, or Mr. Moro.
Good evening, council. These agenda items for the hearing to vacate a public right-of-way portion of O Street between 12th and 13th Street. The city council took action on the intent to vacate on February 1st, 2023, and staff recommends approval of Resolution 2023-06, abandoning a portion of public right-of-way, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
And for the record, I want to say at 7:14 I open this public hearing. Do we have any public comments on this item? Seeing none, do we have any questions from the council? Seeing none, at that time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second? I have a motion by Councilmember Tucker and a second by Councilmember Mendoza. Please vote.
Madam Mayor, you should close.
I need to close, oh, my bad. I need to, I'll close this public hearing at 7:14 PM as well. Please vote.
Does the developer like to say anything, Mr. Robin? I just have a quick question. On the map that was provided, where are the parks located on this? Any other questions from the council?
In lieu of the fire truck, what is the city pleading? In lieu of the fire truck? We're paying our, we're paying all of our developer fees that you guys asked us to pay, so the impact fees and, you know, whatever that is on the, that study that you guys have been doing, that shows where, you know, they ask for what they need and then it all goes through the pool and you pay so much per house, you know, we're paying the house, I think we're paying it through them during every, every building. It'll happen there at the same time, whenever you do the permits for the apartments, we'll be charged for that. And then for the commercial as well, there's a study that's going to be included.
Just for clarification, the developer impact fees do include a fire impact fee, correct?
Correct, 100%, yes.
Is there a reason that county fire asked for an addition into that? Do we have any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm going to close, close the public hearing at 7:20 PM. Mr. Tucker, you have a motion?
Do you have a second?
The staff is recommending two separate actions. If you'll note, the first action is, has to do with adoption of an ordinance here. We're going to be doing the first reading. The second action is related to the general plan amendment and would be adoption of a resolution. So I would suggest that we take each of those separately. Okay, my motion includes introduction, first reading by title only, of Ordinance Number 825 approving the zone change from R1 residential, single family, and C1 commercial general within the Morningstar subdivision.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tucker and a second by Councilmember Obaso Martinez. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Do we have a motion for the second action?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-07, approving the general plan amendment, zone change, subdivision revision to the Morningstar tentative tract map, and certifying a negative declaration for Morningstar subdivision.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mendoza and a second by Councilmember Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Moving on to Items E, Action Items. Discussion and action approved, disapprove. Item E1, subject: Appointment to Imperial Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you'll recall, as a result of the November 8th general election and the ascension of Commissioner Mendoza to Councilmember Mendoza, it did leave our planning commission with an unscheduled vacancy. The city of Imperial did have a call for applicants. We did receive six applications after review of those and through an interview process. It was recommended that the appointment of Rebecca Terasas Baxter be brought before you. This appointment does belong to Councilmember Haida Obaso Martinez, and I would defer to her if she'd like to make any comments.
No, I'm really excited to have Becky on board. I think she's going to be a great asset to the city of Imperial, and I look forward to having her on the planning commission. So, thank you.
Yeah, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Rebecca Terasas Baxter to planning commission.
Do we have a second? I have a motion by
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate the vote of support by this council to serve in this capacity. I also want to thank Councilmember Obaso Martinez for the recommendation for this appointment. I am truly humbled by this vote of confidence and also extremely grateful to be able to serve my community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Item E2, Subject: Interim Chief of Police for City of Imperial. Do I have a staff report, Mr. Morita?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to bring before you an agreement for your ratification between the city and retired chief Michael Crankshaw. He brings a wealth of experience to the position, having served as chief in another neighboring jurisdiction, and we look forward to his service as interim chief. And so, the agreement has been signed, me on behalf of the city and by retired chief Crankshaw. It was a process associated with finally getting him on board that was way more involved than I ever thought would be required, but we navigated that, and he's on board. And so, as I indicated, the contract has been signed, and so I think all that remains is to have him sworn in by the city clerk. And an action by you to ratify it.
Yes.
Yes. I just wanted to make a brief comment. For those of you who don't know, I used to work at the El Centro Police Department with our new interim chief and for many, many moons ago. To say that we've been through a lot would be an understatement. And I just, I had a funny thought that the first day I worked in the dispatch center at the El Centro Police Department, when, I think you'd started in, what, '86, '87? '87, I started in '88. He was arriving to work on a skateboard. He was affectionately known as Spike because he would wear his hair spiked to work every day, and he literally rode a skateboard to work every day.
Might do that again with gas prices.
So, welcome, chief. It's an honor to have you here.
Do we have any other comments from the council?
No, I've known Mike and his family for many, many years, and I'm really excited for them to be serving for the city of Imperial, and I look forward for what you bring to the city of Imperial, and I'm very grateful to your family for lending you to us. So, thank you.
I like to say, chief, I'm so excited to have you as our interim. You've known me since I was a little kid running around with your daughters, and so it's amazing how it comes, you know, life comes back full circle. I will say that getting you on board tested my patience in every way that I didn't know. If it was up to me, it would have been done the second we had that first phone call. So, I'm really looking forward to you, and there's nobody else that I'd rather have lead for interim police chief at this time. So, I look forward to all that you bring to the department.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tucker and a second by Councilmember Mendoza. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Awesome, and with that, we'll have you officially, we'll make you officially official with the oath of office by our city clerk. Chance to stab him, Daniel.
Oh, yeah.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone here in support and obviously the council for the support and confidence in selecting me. I've had the opportunity the last couple of days to meet some of our other department heads and coworkers, and I really feel it's a really good group of people to work for with a really good cause. I am looking forward to the challenge of serving this community, and I believe that we can work collectively together for the betterment of the community. It will be a nice ride. Talking about 30 years ago, or what that may be. That was the version of me that just came up here and pinned me. So, I have to like to take this opportunity and thank my family, my wife and my in-laws and my daughter, daughter-laws, and my son-in-laws, and all my grandchildren, who remarkably have been quiet during this process. Even that one. I like to thank the officers who are out here to support me, the captain and his wife, and my extended family from El Centro and other agencies, and my friends. So, and this really personifies this valley. As big as we are, as San Diego County, but with 200,000 souls, we are a community. We are a community of Imperial, but I came out here probably 36 years ago with the thought of just staying a couple of years, getting my feet wet and going, and this is home. So, thank you again for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving this community.
Thank you, chief. Now, moving on to Did we lose the microphone? There we go. Now, moving on to Item E3, Request for the Annexation of a Portion of APN 064-020-020 to be dedicated to Nance Road Right-of-Way.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item is a request for the annexation of a portion of the parcel you just said. Our department was approached by Mr. Russell Robin, owner of the parcel, stating he wants to annex this little portion of 12-foot wide by 201-foot-long section of his lot, which is totally adjacent to the existing right-of-way of Nance Road. This segment is going to be used to accommodate street improvements such as curb and gutter and sidewalks. Our department met with County and LAFCO to discuss the project. They are not opposing to the idea, and if the city approves, the process would start. Staff recommends to approve the annexation, to start the process for the annexation. Mr. Robin is here to answer questions, if any.
Do we have any questions by the council? Seeing none, I'll, or do you have a question? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion approval of request for annexation of a portion of APN 064-020-020 to be dedicated to Nance Road Right-of-Way.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tucker and a second by Councilmember Mendoza. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Going on to Item E4, Bid 2022-03 Shop Tank Recoding.
Madam Mayor and Council, we're bringing to you the 2022-03 Shop Tank Recoding. It's been completed by Simpson Sand Blasting and Special Coating, Inc. It's recently here on the, in February. We're starting the process of the warranty, and we would like to file the notice of completion with the county.
Do we have any questions from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Obaso Martinez and a second by Council, or, and a second by Councilmember Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to Item E5, Tenure of Imperial Planning Commissioners for the City of Imperial. Mr. Morita.
Madam Mayor and Council, our ordinance basically provides that planning commissioner terms will coincide with the city council person who appoints them. And so, it also And so, it also basically states that when a city councilperson is elected, and our elections occur in even numbered years, that person who is elected will make an appointment that will commence July one of the following year. So, we have, there's a gap in between when a councilperson is elected and when the term commences pursuant to our ordinance. The ordinance also provides, however, that the mayor can remove a councilperson subject to approval of the council, and it would then allow the newly-elected councilpeople to make an appointment to become effective sooner than what the ordinance would otherwise provide. So, you have, earlier in your agenda, you had an appointment by councilperson Ovezzo Martinez, and the other councilperson, Jeff Dale, who didn't run. And so, the other, you would have an appointment by Ms. Mendoza that would be upcoming. If she were to make that appointment now, it wouldn't take effect until July. So, Mr. Hammerness, who currently serves as Chair of the Planning Commission, was appointed by former councilperson Dale. So, the question before you is, do you want to give the opportunity for Ms. Mendoza to make an appointment that would commence sooner than July one?
Yeah, absolutely. This is something that in an ordinance that I found when I was going through is very old, and I would like it. I think every elected deserves to be able to affect it once they get sworn in to make their own appointments. This is mostly, this is purposely for a housekeeping thing, and if Chairman Hammerness would like to reapply, I would encourage him to do so. But yeah, and then I would like to give direction to the city attorney to make sure that we have the ordinance on for the next agenda to, for all appointments to coincide with the elected councilmember. So, if your councilmember gets reelected by the person that you're appointed, you're still appointed.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Yes. Right now?
For the public, right?
Yes.
Evening, Mayor and councilperson staff and the public. My name's Alice Sabadi, five-five-eight Silverwood Street, Imperial, California, nine-two-two-five-one. I am a member of the Planning Commission. I was appointed, I was nominated by Mayor Katie B. Burnsworth.
Bless.
Thanks. And I was appointed by the council in, might have been in June of twenty-one, because I think it started July one. Anyway, I've served on the Planning Commission for about a year and a half, just a little bit over, along with Ms. Mendoza, Councilperson Mendoza. She was on it until she was elevated up to the council via November's election. Mr. Hammerness, Mark Hammerness, has been the chairperson during that time period. And why I'm speaking here is because, as I was told by Mayor Katie, you speak the truth. It's one of the things I like about you. And our last meeting for the Planning Commission was on, I believe, the twenty-fifth of February. And I, it was the only time I arrived before the six-thirty start time. I'm always late. I'm a farmer, and I'm out at the ranch, and I'm hauling ass, excuse me, to get here. So, that was the first time I was on time, actually, a few minutes before, and the only other planning commissioner that was present was Mark. And so, I walk up there, and Mark said, "Did you notice the minutes that there were some misspellings and grammatical errors?" And I said, "Yeah, I noticed it. It was kind of different than the last ones we've been getting." And yes, I did notice that. And he said, "Well, I think I'm going to recommend that they do not get approved and that they go back to be retyped." I said, "Well, that makes sense." A little background on me, English is a second language for me. My first is Italian. I learned English at St. Mary's School with the Blue Nuns who only spoke French. They came from Canada. And by first grade, I started learning English. In the house, we only spoke Italian. English has always been a difficult language for me as a result, so I strive to spell and speak, and if I hear something that adds to my vocabulary, I try to use it later. God gifted me with intelligence that I was able to learn. So, yes, I thought, "Well, it makes sense. I don't want to approve something that's misspelled because in that saying, I'm approving mediocrity, and I believe in improvement." When Mark brought it up at the meeting, it was pulled, and there was no tone or manner on his part to offend whoever was the person who typed the documents. Back in my days, we used to call the typing pool. I remember that when I was practicing law, we had one. Anyway, the point being is, I learned that he was going to be removed from the commission because he pulled the minutes, and I thought, "That doesn't sound right." So, I text Alexa and asked her for Katie's number, because the numbers I have are from previous dealings with Katie in the agricultural field. And I called up Katie, and I told her, I said, "I noticed that, and I agreed with Mark, so I don't understand why he would be removed from the Planning Commission because he wanted to have things correct." And then Katie said, "That's one of the things I like about you, Alice, you speak the truth." I said, "Well, that's what it is." And then Katie went on to state, "Well, Katie, I don't want to offend you, but I'm going to repeat the words, and it's not hearsay because you told me that Mark drinks before coming to meetings." If you remember, Alice, at a joint meeting between the council and the Planning Commission, he said that he had to drink, had to drink five drinks in order to get prepared for the agenda. And I thought, I said, "Well, I've never seen him. Let me finish, because it's not hearsay, attorney."
It's not a legal objection in that sense. It is, it is an extraordinarily personal discussion related to a matter...
And this is a personal matter. This is a personal matter.
My recommendation is to not discuss...
So, I'd like it to be, I'd like it to be shared. So, I said, "I've never seen him." Good. You're taking it off the record. Good.
No, I don't.
Technical difficulties.
I don't know, but...
Are you taking it off the record so the public don't know about this?
You're watching exactly what's happening with me. I don't understand. I don't know.
Is it being recorded?
Yes, absolutely.
Mark has never, I have never, okay, my father was an alcoholic. Why I say was, he died in nineteen, twenty nineteen. I grew up with an alcoholic, so I would know something. I went to Al-Anon, would go to AA meetings to try to figure out what was going on. So, I think I know something if a person smells of alcohol, walks cryptid, slurs his words, doesn't make sense. I never witnessed it. That's my testimony. Principle above personality. That's one of the slogans in AA and Al-Anon. Principle above personality. Make decisions based on principle, because character matters. And we, whoever serves the people of this town, they are to serve. And I consider my time on the Planning Commission as a citizen, serving the members of this community. I do not take the fifty-dollar stipend. I do not use a city laptop. I don't expect to be paid to provide a service as a citizen. And I appreciate, Councilperson Mendoza, you'd like to get your candidate to start sooner. I appreciate, Katie, that you stated you want to get everything as a housekeeping happening at the same time. Those are mechanics. If that was the true intent of all the people here, then why was the thing about minutes being the reason that he pulled it? He's got to get removed. Why was the sharing of alcohol drinking shared? Those shouldn't be reasons. Principles above personalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other members of the public that would like to comment?
Thank you.
Please step forward.
Evening, council. Name's Ruben Rivera, six-oh-seven Kitty Hawk Drive. We're obviously talking about the appointment of, for eliminating Mr. Hammerness from the commission. I have seen Section 211, there's no question. You guys have that ability. That's not what's in question here tonight. I'm not here to debate that, not at all. But what I am, just in the handling, that is my concern, the handling of this situation. I'm here to talk about the baseless allegations. In the past couple of months, the city has come under attack from rumors and allegations directed towards some of our shining stars. And I have always demanded that if you're going to make allegations, that you bring the proof or keep your mouth shut. The reason I bring this up is because now Mr. Hammerness has allegations against him. And those allegations are coming from the city council, two members in particular. Again, I understand Section 211. That's not what's in question here, just the handling, the ethics, the unprofessionalism of this, okay? Since Friday, there has been a different excuse as to why Mr. Hammerness is on the acts. Every day, there has been a different excuse, and even threats that you were going to disclose is this garbage about him drinking before city functions. But I'm pretty sure, not having any evidence, we're just going to stick to Section 211. That's fine. Again, that's not debatable. We have all the copies of all the different versions that have been put out as to what the wording was going to be for tonight, also the phone calls, obviously, that you guys have had with some of the commissioners. Your handling of this has been dirty, nasty, as the allegations that are on social media or out in the streets. The difference is, you're the elected representatives of the city, and you're adding fuel to the fire. I know most of you won't blink. I say you look to, some of you look to your seats as the next check to the next higher office. Prove me wrong and hold that office as long as Jeff Dale did. You pledged to represent the citizens. Mr. Hammerness doesn't count? The person that appointed him doesn't count? Thomas Jefferson said, "Experience has shown that even under the best forms of government, those entrusted with power have, in time and slow operation, perverted it into tyranny. And in the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." That's Martin Luther King. I didn't know these three commissioners before this appointment. You were just a random group of citizens that came together, nothing vested, nothing for us to gain out of it. Now, the four of us random citizens stand here, most likely going to die on this hill over principle and the recognition of the unprofessional handling of Mr. Hammerness, but we'll do it as friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments from the members of the public? I think, yes. This is, this was clearly a policy change, not a personal matter by any means. Ms. Rayliss? Harvey?
Good evening, Mayor Burnsworth and council. My name is Veronica Harvey, Planning Commissioner for the City of Imperial. I'm here today just to speak on behalf of this item on the agenda. Obviously, why I'm here is because there's been a lot of speculation, and for me, without clarity, that's what physically brings me here to this meeting. Just to start off, being on the Planning Commission has definitely been something that I've really enjoyed. It's been an honor. It's been a great experience working with the community, with staff, and with the council that I have worked with. I just want to start with, you know, just saying my piece as far as Chairman Hammerness and his leadership. I have felt that as a commissioner, that he has provided stable leadership to us, and I don't know what the intent is, if, you know, if he is going to be removed or not. I just feel that I would like to share my sentiment regarding him as a chairperson, as a commissioner. I don't know him outside of this. I've never met the other commissioners outside of this. But sitting next to him, I do know that he has the best interests of the city at heart. I've seen him, you know, I've seen him be stern when he's needed to be stern. I've seen him bend to help the residents when that's needed, and I think that that's really admirable on his part. So, it does sadden me to see that, that he wouldn't be able to see out the couple of months that he has left of his term, just in the sense, because it just, and I, you know, I could be wrong. I just feel like it's harsh. I don't know. And, you know, having been on the commission with Councilmember Mendoza, Mayor Burnsworth, if any, if the situation was you, you know, and again, I don't know the, you know, the full extent of why this is happening, because I haven't spoken to a councilperson before this, before this meeting, I would be here in support for you as well, as I would for the other ones. When both of you ran for council, I supported both of you, and I continue to support you. And because I know that we are all here with the same, with the same purpose, which is to, for the best interests of the city, and I firmly in my heart believe that is Chairman Hammerness's purpose on the commission. With that being said, I just feel that whatever the reason is, and again, I don't, I don't want to spread whatever is or is not true, I just hope that you see it in your heart that, that he does have the best interests of the city at heart. Councilmember Mendoza, you were the last one to leave us. You got to see firsthand. That, I believe that you do see that, that you did see that, and, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, that's my assumption, and, and I just think that, I mean, I don't know how to say it, like, that it just would seem, it just seems like he's being removed for something that he did wrong, and I feel if it's based on what he did as a commissioner or chairman, I've sat by him for the past few years, and I haven't witnessed anything that, that I feel would be grounds for removing him in this manner, okay? And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments from members of the public?
Those of you who don't know, I'm Mark Hammerness. So, I'm the flavor of the moment. When I was appointed to the Planning Commission three half-years ago or so, I was really excited. I love being on the Planning Commission. My wife will tell you, "Do you have a meeting tonight? Do you have a meeting?" I said, "Yes, we have a meeting." And when we get a notice that we weren't having a meeting because there wasn't anything, she would say you were extremely disappointed. My attendance is, if not completely perfect, close to perfect. I've done everything... I've done everything I've been asked to do. I reviewed my paperwork, I did my homework. I came to meetings. When I was asked to come to meetings, I went to functions for the, uh, market days, when the extra volunteers were needed. I've never asked for anything from the council. I've never made an effort to use my influence or power as chairman, like, you know, that, you know, ten cents in a cup of coffee, that'll work for that. And I've stayed out of everybody's business. I just did my job, took my paperwork, went home, came, tried to do the best job I could do, and stay away. I've learned more about the dirty laundry of this city in the last five days than I knew even existed in the last three years, because that's how little I want to know and stay out of everybody's lives. Um, I understand my term was coming up, the end of the summer or midsummer. And I know from a little bit of political experience that I'm no longer the flavor of the day and was not going to be reappointed even if I had applied. And at this time, there's been no opening for applications to replace me. And if the applications that were open before, for the one term we had, we were not informed that those applications could also be used to replace additional members, uh, if these actions were taken. All I ask, eh, well, I'm gonna state first, it's been an honor to serve. I've enjoyed every minute of it. And I would like the opportunity to finish my term and go out gracefully and quietly and happily. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments? Do you have any comments from the council?
Yes, um, Madam Mayor, as, if those of you don't know, I'm councilmember Mendoza, the one who, uh, this, the position in question is the position that's appointed by me. I've let councilmember Burnworth know. I, I think in, I understand the concept of why we're changing this because it's an attempt to have the appointments run concurrently with the appointments or the, the elections of the council members. And it, it, they don't coincide. The, the July first and the December appointment don't coincide. So there is gonna be a need for an, uh, a change to the ordinance. And I believe that might take a little bit of time between the, the processing of the paperwork and then getting it approved by council. And it's my intent to recommend that we leave Commissioner Hammond, Hammerness in place so that the council continues to operate until said time that that ordinance is done and over with and we can go through a, a proper, uh, application process that Mr. Commissioner Hammerness is encouraged to apply to.
Do you have a second?
That was their motion?
I'll, I'll make that my motion, yes.
Yeah, I'll second that.
With that, I have a motion by councilmember Mendoza and a second by councilmember Tucker, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item. It is item. On the special agenda, um, D one, subject resolution of the Imperial City Council regarding executive management positions.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, before you is a resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, uh, that would be establishing the members of the executive team. These are, uh, directors all at a range one oh two as at-will positions. This does not impact any of the current occupants of these positions. Uh, but moving forward, uh, should those positions become vacant, uh, they will become at-will and, and subject to all applicable laws in that capacity. And we would recommend that you do adopt that.
Do you have any comments from the public?
And it, sorry.
And then any from the council?
In addition to directors, is there any other positions that are impacted by this?
No, other than, well, I'd say myself, but yes, just all executive members of the team.
Have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Ovezo Martinez and a second by councilmember Tucker, please vote.
We're still waiting.
Motion carries four zero.
Now moving on to item F, reports, uh, F one, department reports. Do you have any department reports? Tony, Mr. Lopez.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, as you already may know, unfortunately, we had to reschedule our Blues Brews and BBQ event. But we will be, uh, reconvening and trying this one more time, hopefully for the last time, uh, March twenty fifth, and we encourage everybody from the public to attend. And then, uh, also, uh, right shortly after that event, we have our Autism Second Annual, uh, Fair. It will be at Eager Park from twelve to five. Uh, so, uh, that will be April eighth. Uh, and we encourage everybody to attend that as well.
Thank you. Any other department reports? Saying none, uh, city manager report.
Nothing for me to see.
Uh, do you have any mayor or, or do you have any councilmember reports?
I have nothing to report.
None, but, um, but like to say, welcome aboard, Mike, and I have a lot of faith in you.
Um, the only thing I could think of in the last time period since we last met is we had the opportunity, three of us did, or, yeah, three of us did, on this, uh, council to attend the NAF Gala. Um, that's the first time I've ever been there. That's quite the event. And it was an honor to, to be there, to see those service members, our local service members, being honored in, in the different awards that they had received. It, it was, it was quite the evening. And I, I think the city for making sure we got in there.
And then, um, thank you. And we actually want to introduce, um, Dr. Gina Nunez, um, from SDSU. For my comment.
Mayor, and members of the council and the public, congratulations for everyone taking on new roles. I understand the obligations and the responsibilities that come with public service. I am Gina Nunez, I'm Sherry, I'm the dean of San Diego State Imperial Valley. I'm the first Latina dean in a hundred and twenty-five years of the university's history. And it's great honor and great responsibility that I have taken to come home. Because I was previously at the University of Texas in El Paso. I was previously in New Mexico doing my research. I went to San Diego State, got two degrees there, went on to UC Riverside, and then decided to leave home to go do research on the border. And I think, you know, there's a, a proverb I've lived up to that, you know, nobody's a prophet in their own land. And that many times we have to step out of our comfort zones to grow. But I always kept coming home, every Christmas, New Year, spring break, summer, as hot as it is, this was my home, the Imperial Valley. So it's with great pleasure that I come back to share with you some of our initiatives and our projects and our desire to reach out to our community's leadership, to establish ties and obligations and commitments, to look for funding together, to find ways that we can grow. I'd like to introduce you to Andrea Sanchez. One of the initiatives that we are pursuing is state funding to expand nursing facilities. We are looking around the valley, trying to find out what spaces can we use and rent or occupy and modify to bring in a new nursing degree. We have an accelerated nursing degree. We have a master's in nursing leadership. We also have a master's in homeland security, so I'm gonna take this amazing opportunity to look at all these officers. We have a criminal justice degree and a master's in homeland security. And as we're specializing in the new STEM building, we gave an update yesterday. To give the public an update, this is where we're at in the planning stages. This is where we're at and how we're planning to open a new STEM building in Brawley. We have our home base in Colexico. We have our nursing and our STEM building coming up in Brawley. But where's Imperial? We serve the whole region. And I think it's important, I, we were meeting with the county commissioners yesterday to make an, a really concerted effort that we serve this region, that we don't just serve one city or the other, that we serve the Imperial Valley. That every time I go up to San Diego, and I actually did not go up today so I could be with you all this evening, I actually skirted a storm with hail, right? And my family's calling me, are you in San Diego? I said, no, I actually stayed so I can go address the city council in Imperial. And do it in a very intentional way to make sure that you know that we're here and that we're looking for spaces that we can go in on together. In the spirit of cost sharing, in the spirit of growth, we are looking for spaces to grow our nursing program. Currently, we have eleven degrees and we have three graduate programs. And since we have been established in the Imperial Valley since nineteen fifty-nine, we have seen very little investment in higher education for this region. We are the only institution that provides a four-year degree and graduate programs in the Imperial Valley, serving a hundred and eighty thousand people. And in the last four or five years, we're now beginning to see an investment in our institution. And we have new leadership. They are rooted in rural communities. They understand the important role a university offers its people. We're in the business of offering opportunities. That's my business. And I'm working really hard for people to know that we exist and that we are serving entire generations of families. I'm very blessed to have met families, it's in my family, my children. I went here, right? I just met an officer that served in the California Highway Patrol. He earned his BA and his masters and he went to earn his degrees before his two children earned their degrees. That's three people that have been benefiting from the opportunities that we have been able to offer them. And Andrea, I would like to introduce you and share your role, what your commitment is in terms of providing skills uh, to our first responders, to our nurses, and what we can do if we can go in on opportunities together. So please come on in.
Thank you, Dean Nunez. Uh, good evening, council, and good evening, mayor. I'm happy to be here, representing, uh, San Diego State University Imperial Valley School of Nursing, as well as myself as an Imperial resident. So as Dean Nunez shared, um, we are excited to hopefully create a joint space for interprofessional simulation, uh, experiences. Um, as she mentioned, in the prehospital setting, we would be able to incorporate, reach air and have, uh, emergency response, um, simulations. Include ground ambulance, AMR, um, include our police, law enforcement, fire, immigration, and Border Patrol as well. And this would all be done outside. And then we can, um, move forward on the inpatient setting and help with, um, ER services, our local hospitals, clinics, and home health agencies. So, uh, we just have so many opportunities to partner with each other and, um, happy to discuss further. Thank you.
So as I stated, we just started the first bachelor's in so, in nursing. And we submitted a grant for a bachelor's in social work. Right now, we're, our students have to go to Yuma, and I understand that that program might no longer be available. We have a master's in social work. We're trying to address the mental and behavioral health of this region. And with the complications that our, our local hospitals are facing, our primary goal is to address the nursing shortage of this region. So any opportunity that you can identify as city government to pursue workforce development funding, we're looking for those opportunities with the county, with the different cities. When you see grants, if you think we can support you with letters of support or as co-authors of grants, we want to make sure that those grants don't stay on the table when we can be going for them together. And if we can do it through a partnership with the local university and the local city government, if we can do it in partnership with the county, if we can do it partnership with private developers, we are looking for people who want to help us grow together. So I brought a folder that shares some of our background and accomplishments at San Diego State. I think more importantly, we've been around, I graduated from Colexico High School. I didn't know we had a university. So I think we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of catching up, which is why I'm going around the county and going anywhere I can to find our support, our allies, and people who can help us dream. Because I think the opportunities for this region are long overdue. Not just because they found lithium, that we now get a lot of visits from a lot of people of interest, but because we are worthy of investing and our future and our youth, I hope that we can grow our own. That is our intention. If we can grow our own students, grow opportunities for our students, they love their families, we love our families, and we like to come home. And then they can be the energy leaders, the healthcare leaders, the law enforcement leaders, and they can stay here and, um, promote the future benefit and well-being of our community. So we brought a folder for each one of you. Thank you for this time and opportunity to address you and to address the public. We're here to serve you, and we will be having open houses. Let your kids know, we welcome you to come onto our campus. We have events all the time, so come on over. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nunez.
Thank you for your time. I look forward to collaborating with SDSU and providing higher education opportunities, um, specifically for the city of Imperial. And, um, also, moving on to, um,
It's a report out of closed session.
The council met today in closed session and discussed three items, uh, with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Direction was given to council on all three items. On, the council also met regarding property located, um, at four fifty West Aitken Road. Discussion and direction was given to the agency negotiator as listed on the agenda.
And with that, um, I'd like to adjourn this regular city council meeting until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM. And, uh, I adjourn this meeting at eight thirteen PM. Thank you.